Thank you all for being here this evening. I'm Julie Giardano, your county executive. Next to me, to my left, is Pam Olend, our director of finance, and I'm going to go ahead and turn the presentation over to her.
So, as Julie stated, this is the Executive's 2026-2030 Capital Improvement Plan Public Hearing. This public hearing is for the public's benefit to give us what they are interested in for the next five years for us to put in the plan. It does not mean that all these things will get funded. The funding happens during the budget process. This is a plan to help us determine how much funding we possibly might need. Section 702 of the county charter defines what a capital project means. It means a building or a purchase of any physical betterment. It's acquisition of property for the permanent nature of public use, and it's a purchase of equipment for the public betterment as well. This includes land, bridges, buildings, equipment, and these typically what we put in the capital improvement plan are items that either require significant dollars or will take a number of years to plan and complete. So, as Julie referenced, there is a specific CIP timeline. Certain of these things are called out in the charter. September and October, we receive input from all the departments as to what they are interested in and their needs for the next five years. November, we do a public input meeting. That's what this is. This is public input. This is not a completed plan. We do not have a completed plan. We are still working on that because the completed plan has to be submitted to the council on the third Tuesday of December. The council then, by charter, is to adopt the plan in February. They do have the ability to extend that deadline. When we are putting together the capital and operating budget for the next fiscal year for fiscal '26, we will use this plan as a starting point for fiscal '26 funding. We will then look at what our revenue estimates are at that time and what our other expense needs are of that time and make a determination as to whether or not some changes have to be made from what got submitted and adopted. The council then adopts the budget in June, which funds the capital projects for one fiscal year, starting July 1st. Then we do project implementation of any of those capital items. To fund these things, we utilize fund balance and we utilize debt. The county has a debt limit. We have two different things that we have that we are not allowed to exceed. First is a debt limit, which is determined by our assessable base. The second is a limit on our debt service. We are not allowed to spend more than 12% of total general fund estimated new revenue. New revenue is not taking stuff out of your savings account. It's the new revenue that's coming in that fiscal year. As such, the current estimate for fiscal 2025, and that's all we can do when we're basing our numbers on, because that's our best estimate at this point in time, is that we have a P&amp;I payment right now of $14.6 million in our fiscal '25 budget. Our budgeted new revenue is $184 million. As such, we are using 7.93% of our 12%. So, we only have about 4% worth of space remaining that we can borrow to do projects. So, as stated, these are some projects that the departments have come to us and requested. This is not a complete list. That would take multiple pages. These are the top, probably the top dollar amount projects on our list. The new Shoemaker Pond Library, corrections needing expansion of their current building, discussion about Barron Creek Road Bridge, water and sewer sanitary upgrades. At the civic center, this civic center only has one elevator, and it has to carry freight and people. So, we're looking at putting in a freight elevator so that there is just a people elevator and then a freight elevator. That is actually currently being designed right now. This would be paying for the actual installation. Several projects with Wrecked Parks, the West Metro Core Park, Phase Two of Pirate's Wharf, Mason Dixon upgrades, creating a master plan for Connolly Mill, and that would just be the plan in this five years. Winter Place Lighting Project, airport is requesting parking expansion and solid waste. We need expansion of the number of cells we have to accept the trash that is coming into our solid waste facility. One thing not on this list is the Board of Education. We typically put that in a separate list. That is this one. Now, these are very small. There are copies up front. Their priority project, as most should expect, is the Fruitland Primary Replacement. In fiscal 2025, we've allocated $20.5 million for that project. The request for fiscal '26 is $8.3 million from the county. The state estimated share is $5.9 million. That leaves a delta of $27.3 million that if this project is to be funded next year, most likely will have to be funded by county because the state does not have the funds at the moment. This is called forward funding. We are looking into how to forward fund that. And then '27, again, there is no county share, but there is a state payment and additional state funding that is not available from state coffers. That equals $56.6 million of additional funding needed to complete this building. Thirty-six of it may have to come from county coffers until we can be repaid by the state. That is $36 million that could have and probably will have an impact on other county projects, including other Board of Education projects and any other projects for other departments. $36 million, we would have to borrow or we would have to fund for the Board of Education next year $44 million for one project. That would be the single largest project the county has ever done in county funding in one year. So, with that, I now am opening the floor to comments. Please, again, understand that this is public comment. We were not going to, we're asking you to state your name, and we're asking you to state what you're interested in. These comments will be taken down, and we will consider that as we're doing the final preparation for the submission to the county council. And again, the executive will be doing a three-minute timeline. Thank you very much.
Oh, I was going to say, I know you're not letting us off that easy.
Good evening. I'm Gene Malone, chairman of the Wycomico County Board of Education. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank the county government for investing over $21 million in the replacement Fruitland Primary Project. I was disappointed the county executive's initial list of CIP priorities didn't include Fruitland Primary. Public schools aren't just a place for students to learn. They also serve countywide needs. Beyond the classroom, the new Fruitland Primary will be a heating and cooling center as requested by county emergency management, as well as provide dedicated space for the Wycomico Wrecked and Parks Basketball Program and a much anticipated site circulation improvement as requested by the city of Fruitland. Capital funding for new schools is an investment in other community needs as well, hosting an after-school program, a school-based health center, and a Maryland Food Bank distribution site. In addition, this project will add much-needed pre-kindergarten capacity to address the large increase in enrollment Wycomico County public schools has experienced the last two years and is projected to grow. In fiscal year '26, we anticipate that we may even be eligible for enrollment growth and relocatable classroom program funding. School buildings are community centers, and a modern, energy-efficient, safe school building is good for everyone. In quoting the press release regarding this hearing, "With this CIP, Wycomico County is prioritizing projects that will enhance public safety, improve accessibility, and foster economic and recreational opportunities." As the county moves forward, these investments reflect Wycomico's commitment to a sustainable and prosperous future for all residents. The Board of Education is hopeful that schools will be a part of that prosperous future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gene.
Michael Stoffler, superintendent of schools, also Wycomico County resident. I'd like to thank the county government for their past investment in capital projects for Wycomico County public schools. Wycomico County Public Schools has consistently been a good steward of capital dollars and strives to use as many other funding sources as possible to deliver the board's prioritized capital projects. We also take pride in clearly and consistently communicating our needs to both the county executive and county council. At a recent work session with county government, we discussed the FY '26 CIP top priorities, as well as highlighted the many ways that we've executed several other projects that actually ended up saving the county $62 million in the past five years. As you know, unfortunately, many of those sources, such as the ESER funds, are no longer available, and the state is looking at more of a formulaic approach to capital funding, which will make project cash flows challenging in the future. However, like other jurisdictions throughout the state who are actively forward funding, including counties like Cecil County and Worcester County on the eastern shore, we believe that we can overcome those challenges with cooperation and support of local government. The cash flow, as you know, is very fluid, and the numbers that you have on the screen also are not necessarily the exact numbers that will be needed over the course of the next two years. Alex Donahue, the director of Maryland Interagency Commission for School Construction, has also offered to come at any time to meet if there are any reservations or any questions. And I'd like to briefly highlight the Board of Education's priority projects. At the top is the replacement of Fruitland Primary. Please keep in mind that the county has already put over $21 million towards this project. In addition, the cost share has dramatically shifted towards the state with the potential for them to cover even more. Currently, the state is slated to cover 56% of that overall project cost. The county has already funded 74% of the 44% of the project that the county is responsible for. We cannot wait on this project. We know it's needed, and any additional time would only mean that the cost escalation of this project would be shifted towards the county itself from the state. So, let's develop a funding scenario where this project does stay on track and construction can begin next school year as it's supposed to. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stoffler.
I'm Paris App, current principal at Fruitland Primary. Having previously served at Beaver Run, I'm here to speak on the experiences I have that face both schools. Both schools contend with aging, inefficient facilities, separate buildings, multiple portables, limited storage, outdated heating systems, and classrooms that are not equipped to support today's teaching methods. We face hallways cluttered with student belongings, classrooms without basic privacy due to lack of doors, and ongoing issues with outdated plumbing, heating, and air conditioning systems. Additionally, our nurses suite is undersized and unable to meet the needs of our growing student population. However, having witnessed the pride, excitement, and appreciation from the Beaver Run community when they moved into our new school, I can truly emphasize with the frustration felt by the Fruitland Primary community as we patiently wait for the opportunity to experience the same transformation. But here's the good news. The transformation is coming and continue to come. We are on the cusp of something truly exciting, something that will not only improve educational experience for students and staff, but be a hub for the entire community. The design of the new building will address longstanding issues with our current facilities. It will incorporate modern technology, updated circulation patterns, better grade groupings, safe expansive outdoor play areas, and a building that is bright, modern, fully accessible, and designed with the holistic needs of our students in mind. But it doesn't stop there. This new school will just be a place for students to learn. It will also serve as a center for our community's well-being. We are excited to include a health suite in the new building, which provides essential health services not only for our students but their families. This will be a vital resource for the community, offering convenient access to care when it needed most. In addition, with partnership with our local Wrecked Parks, we can provide students with access to enriching activities outside of normal school hours. The collaboration will expand opportunities for physical activity, after-school programs, community events, and helping our students grow both inside and outside of the classroom. This new building is a true community asset, one that empowers our teachers, nurtures our students, and strengthens our entire community. It will be a place where we foster creativity, collaboration, and critical thinking while addressing the health and well-being of our families and offering enrichment for our students long after the school bell rings. It's incredibly important that this project continues moving forward. Together, we can create a space that will not only meet the needs of our students today, but will also prepare them for success in the future, as all we need to do is bring the community together.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joe White. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. I do agree with continuing with the funding for Fruitland Primary. But actually, one thing I would like for both the county executive and the county council to put more of their time into, and I know it's limited, but is the CIP process in general. I've attended many county council meetings. I've listened to Director Pam Olend speak about how, you know, this is a very fluid living document, and it's hard, it's very hard, it's impossible to predict everything that's going to happen the next four or five years. What is frustrating is, in the last 10 years, and the Connolly Mill Master Plan is on here, and I think that's very important because two county executives ago, promises were made to, I don't live in the Shadow Hills community, but a plan was put in place. But what wasn't on this plan a year ago, at least to my knowledge, was the Shoemaker Pond Library. Now, it's a great opportunity, and I actually support putting the library there. What is really hard is we're talking a $200 million budget, operating budget, and you're talking a portion of that also calculated into the capital improvements. If we don't put as much effort into the process of the CIP, not just your office, the entire council as well, then this document doesn't hold as much water, and I think when we're talking this type of numbers, it's actually becoming very important that we do it. When I go to the Parks and Wrecked meetings, I have a chance to see their five-year plan, and I can tell you, I'm sure the Board of Education has a very similar one. It's very robust. There's a lot of detail, and I think as much of that information needs to be shared with the public as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Taylor, resident here since 1971, as I recall. I was also, for several years, the county council's attorney, not, as some people have said, the county's attorney, and I was not fired from that position. I resigned. Mr. Cannon is here, and I'm sure he will verify that. There have been statements to the contrary, so I'd like to clear that up. But I'm here in several regards. First of all, I endorse the Board of Education's requests. There are other items on here that I think are important, the library, the Shoemaker Pond Library, the West Metro Park core plan, Core Park, pardon me. That's been kicked around by the county executives for, what, 15 years now, John? I think that's when they bought that property. It's long overdue to use it for what it was purchased for, which would have been a public park. But more importantly, I'm concerned because what we're hearing and what we've been provided with really doesn't give us enough information to make logical decisions on what we should support. For example, the list of projects that was submitted. There's no cost estimates for any of them. How are we to know which ones of these are going to be expensive, and if so, what for? Ms. Olend said, oh, this is only a partial list. Well, why don't we have at least a summary of the other items so we know what's being requested? Again, we don't really know what the projected revenue is for next year. We don't even have the financial statements for last year, which ended four months ago. Harford County got theirs in October. Most of the counties I follow get them within six months, which you're supposed to under the state law. As far as I know, under the elected executives, we've never gotten them within six months. It's often been eight or nine months. You're well into the budget process then. We need that information at least on an estimated basis now. So, we really don't have much information to go on, and this is really just kind of a mock meeting, in my opinion. Thank you.
Always a pleasure, Mr. Taylor. Thank you.
Brian Rager, chief finance and operations officer for Wycomico County Schools and Wycomico County resident. I'd like to address a couple of things. First, as was mentioned, the five-year plan at Parks and Wrecked, and I'm sure that the Board of Ed has something similar, and I'd like to assure the public that we do and invite the public to visit our website at wycomicoschools.org. And under the Business and Operations section, you'll see both our educational facilities' master plan and our capital improvement plan. They're both chock full of data on our existing schools and plans for the future. And with 24 schools, we do have plans for a future. We're always going to have schools on our construction. If you figure we're doing a building every three or four years, with 24 years, you're getting 75 to 100 years before you come back around to a building. It's a long line. After Fruitland Primary, we're looking at an HVAC upgrade at Fruitland Intermediate, followed by a replacement Wycomico Middle School. That's a 93-year-old building. That replacement project will provide an opportunity to consolidate several programs that are scattered throughout the county in various modular buildings in a centralized location at the existing Y Middle to efficiently serve high-risk populations. This includes our newcomer center for English language learners, our Choices Non-Traditional Program, our Evening High School, and the potential for very much-needed special education programming. We're also planning for an HVAC upgrade at West Side Intermediate and Salisbury Middle Schools. I do encourage the public and stakeholders to look at that data and see the hard work that our team puts forward to support our students and our community. And I'd also like to address, Principal App did a wonderful job describing some of the reasons why new Fruitland Primary is needed, and sometimes that leaves people to think that the Board of Ed isn't maintaining the buildings. I'd like to ensure you that we really do a great job with maintenance. And to exemplify that, the Interagency Commission on School Construction, which is where the state funding comes from for schools, inspects schools in every county every year. We're always in the top five, and for the most recent year, we were the number-one school system in the state for school maintenance. We're very proud of that. We look forward to continuing that maintenance and school construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mikel Dahlien, public parks directly improve our lives. They give us healthier bodies. They give us calmer minds. They help us build stronger communities. The connection between nature and mental health is undeniable. As former Sexual Salt Services Coordinator, I witnessed how vital green space was for healing in children affected by violence. Parks help us to address issues of crisis and inequity. Often, those who need nature the most are the ones with the least access. Connolly Mill Park offers an opportunity that is unique and irreplaceable in our county. This amazing place is part of a seven-mile continuous greenway. It has the highest elevations in the county, three creeks which form the watershed for the Wycomico River, areas of old growth forests, and portions of the Paleo Channel. The Tri-County Council highlighted the benefits combining the natural environment of Connolly Mill Park with the ballfields of the adjacent Henry S. Parker complex and their comprehensive economic development strategy from 2022 to 2024. This plan details an extraordinary multipurpose facility for the diverse recreational needs of all county and lower-shore residents in a rapidly urbanizing area, serving the greatest benefit to the greatest number of people. We will be protecting our most valuable natural resources and bringing economic benefit to our county at the same time. The vision for Connolly Mill Park was clear from the start. The county's Natural Resource Conservation Advisory Committee, Recreation, Parks, and Tourism, local groups, and residents work side by side with the executive and legislative branches of the Wycomico government to shape an environmentally protective plan for low-impact passive recreation. We can look to this as a shining example of how our county can come together for the greater good of all. The development of Connolly Mill Park has been included in every Wycomico County capital improvement plan since its donation in 2019 until this year. Let's restore it. The time has come to permanently memorialize the original vision for Connolly Mill Park. These plans have existed since the land's donation. As citizens, we want to know that these will not be called into question again. We urge greater transparency regarding the altered timeline for mining and assurances that the forest land and watersheds will be protected as advocated for by the NRCAC. We stand at a crossroads. The estimated completion time for mining has doubled. New issues of safety and security have arisen. The county faces increased liability due to reckless trespassers. A middle ground exists, fenced a 55-acre mining exclusion area, leaving the remaining 180 acres open to the public. Pedestrian bridge from Naylor Mill Forest Trails could minimize costs and provide parking at Henry S. Parker to access to property for hikers, bikers, and families. The interim solution would promote healthy public use, combat illegal activity through good citizen stewardship of the land, and protect the county from liability while mining is completed. Mining of cover for our landfill generates tens of millions of dollars in savings for the county. A fraction of those savings could secure the work site, fulfill the promise of low-impact public recreation, and protect the vital ecological resources on the site. This path forward balances fiscal responsibility and the highest and best use of this extraordinary place. Please honor and uphold the good work of the previous elected officials, county departments, and committees, environmental groups, and citizen stakeholders by restoring Connolly Mill Parks at CIP. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Charles Stegman of Salisbury, speaking as president of the Wycomico Environmental Trust, or WET. WET was very pleased to see Connolly Mill Park returned to the CIP list. This park has been in the works for many years, and we and many others look forward to seeing it open for the health and enjoyment of all county residents and visitors. We thank the county administration for recognizing its importance. The parkland lies at the headquarters of three streams that cross our treasured Paleo Channel and empty into the Wycomico River. The ecological preservation of this land is critical to water quality throughout our watershed and the health of the aquifer that supplies many county residents and businesses with their water. The parkland also provides essential habitat for much wildlife, including birds, forests, old-growth trees more than 100 years old. This habitat is ecologically significant and very sensitive. The park's site is important for another especially important reason. Unlike most other public land in the county, this location is convenient to many residents of high-density housing or otherwise underserved communities, as well as to residents of many other housing developments on the north side who currently have very little public green space. The parkland forests already contain trails, and once the park is complete, it will also provide public access to pond water for lower-impact boating, a rare resource in our county. If disturbed, none of these valuable resources could be restored within our lifetimes or even our children's lifetimes, if ever. It is therefore incumbent on us to ensure the preservation and use of this parkland for the purpose for which it was donated to the county: low-impact public recreation and enjoyment. Thank you.
I'm Mary Hubner. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. Wycomico County really needs parks. The ones we have are good, but we need at least one or two more. There have been numerous studies, books, and writing, and books written about the benefit of being in nature. It's good for all of us, and I can provide a bibliography if you like. I'm wearing a few hats tonight. I lead a group of seniors for a group called the Institute of Retired Persons, or IRP, almost every Sunday afternoon in City Park or one of the other county parks, like Pemberton or Pirate's Wharf. We always enjoy our walks, A for the camaraderie and B just for the joy of being in a park. I'm also the president of the local bird club, the Tri-County Club, which is Worcester, Wycomico, and Somerset. We are a chapter of the state organization in Maryland, the Maryland Ornithological Society, and I am on the board of that organization. Our club has monthly field trips to parks and other places like the Ocean City Inlet and coast for the ducks and shorebirds. Birders bring lots of money to areas where we can find unusual birds, and Connolly Mill looks to be just such an area. I have birded Henry Parker Fields and gotten some nice sightings there, but to have more access to that area would be absolutely wonderful. Birders are constantly coming to this area for rarities, and we find them in places like Nutter's Neck in Quantico. If and when Connolly Mill opens to the public, I can guarantee birders will come from all over the state and outside this area. They'll be coming. As an example, I know this because I recently received an email from a person who lives in California and visits his mother in West Ocean City. He's concerned about an issue, a birding issue, that is going on right now there. So, there is a certain group of birders that will go anywhere, anywhere, if a rare bird will go anywhere, anywhere, if a rare bird is spotted. Like a spoonbill was spotted up in Bombay Hook about a year ago, and we all went up there because spoonbills live in Florida. So birders will just go places. And we, but beyond that, parks are necessary for our good mental health, which was already mentioned. We all need to be in connection with nature to help us through good times and bad. The peace and quiet of a natural setting cannot be beat and cannot be overstated. There are certain spots I'm familiar with, and probably a few people, probably a lot of people here know where I'm talking about. There's one on Forest Grove Road that's a swamp, and it's just so peaceful. And one on Waste Gate, also, it's swampy, but it's gorgeous there. You just, I'm not finished. We need parks. We need parks.
Good evening. My name's Craig Stoffko. As always, I speak from a public health perspective and start by referencing Maryland's county health rankings, which again list Wycomico as one of the least healthy counties in which to live. Regarding health outcomes, we have one of the highest obesity rates in the state, score very poorly on cancer measures, rank near the bottom in diabetes and lung disease, and the incidence of heart disease in the county is second to last. With respect to the health factors, we score near the bottom on the variable of county residents getting enough physical activity, and dead last in access to opportunities for exercise, which surely can be attributed to Wycomico being the only county in the state without a state park. There are 23 counties in Maryland and 64 state parks. Most counties have two or three state parks. Some have four or five. One county has six. Grants for these kind of projects represent the easiest of all state and federal funding to secure. The requests are all but impossible for state and federal entities to deny, as the benefits to programs such as these are so profound. Just to name a few, and this information pertains to state, county, as well as city parks, and is taken from the National Recreation and Parks Association report. Parks improve mental and physical health by reducing stress and anxiety and improving cardiovascular health. Spending time in nature improves concentration and memory, which in turn helps children's school performance. Parks improve water quality, protect groundwater, and reduce air pollution. Parks provide economic benefits to local governments and taxpayers. Parks provide gathering places for families and social groups and help build strong communities. They've also been shown to reduce crime and incarceration rates. Parks provide habitat for wildlife. There's in fact a family of bald eagles nesting on the property in question, which is remarkable considering the land lies in its entirety within the confines of Salisbury city limits. It's quite a feather in the cap of the city of Salisbury, as well as Wycomico County, but most importantly, it's a godsend for Wycomico County residents in desperate need of additional physical activity. When we desire to repair the mind, body, spirit, or attempt to mend the heart and the soul, nothing suffices more adequately than a walk through the woods. I realize these things don't happen overnight. There are other priorities, and I, for one, am not asking for this park to be built tomorrow, or even next year, or the year after that, rather something official in writing stating that one day this land will be developed into a park. Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Aid, Wycomico County resident. I'm speaking tonight as a mountain bike enthusiast and the president of the Eastern Shore International Mountain Bike Association. We maintain and build the trails at Naylor Mill Forest, points south and maintain and build the trails in the city park. We have, in the last four years, expanded the trail capacity at Naylor Mill from roughly four and a half miles of trail to now a little bit more than 11 miles of trail. People will come from all over the eastern shore to use the trails for mountain biking, for hiking, for running events. Most recently, we had a group from Lewis of the Sussex Sand Sharks. They were, they're a youth mountain bike league. They came to help do trail maintenance with us on Saturday, and they regularly come to Naylor Mill to ride. I'm here, obviously, to speak in support of turning Connelly Mill into a destination for outdoor recreation. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Matt Drew. I live in Salisbury in Wycomico County. And first off, I'd like to thank the executive branch and the legislative branch that's here for the opportunity to listen to us as citizens, because obviously, it's our tax dollars, but as well, we should have a common collective vision about where our dollars are going to be spent. And you guys have the hard job of figuring out what the best priorities are. So thank you for your leadership in that. I'm fully supportive of the park project, and I got to be part of the cleanup day that Tom was just mentioning. But I am here to speak about some important things for our future as well in other areas. I know that the water and sewer expansions are part of the capital improvement plan. I fully support that. I was the chair of the Greater Salisbury Committee's Water and Sewer Task Force, and I was glad to see that, that under our current leadership, we've done more in the last two years than we had in the previous 40 years to advance that. So let's keep the ball rolling and continue to make sure that we have funding for that. Also, coming up on the horizon, there's several buildings that are here in Wycomico County throughout the state of Maryland. We happen to be standing in one today that are going to have to start to comply with new building energy performance standards, and that involves ultimately making buildings net zero by 2040. And it's not, it's not an easy standard to meet, but as well, there's pretty severe penalties for non-compliance. Those are all going to equate to large amounts of capital funds that are going to have to be dedicated to making buildings more efficient, like the Wycomico Youth and Civic Center that we're standing in today. So, so I really encourage, in, as you decide how to prioritize funding, that that's going to have to be something that is studied, quantified, and then ultimately funded as a project. Like to make sure that we continue to support the, the last phase of the Naylor Mill Extension to connect Levin to Shield Road to Crooked Oak Lane. That's been a decades-long project, and, and as it should be, because it's a pretty significant project for transportation in the county. But we're almost there. We just have one last connection to make. So let's, let's try to make that a priority. And then lastly, it's very mundane, but really important to us all. If we hit the capacity of our landfill and we no longer have a landfill that works for us anymore, that's going to have a huge impact on our, on our county. I think everybody here knows that. So I would encourage you to continue to fund the things that we have to do to expand landfill capacity. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Wright, and I live in Hebron. I am currently the chair of the Wycomico County Education Foundation, and I'm proud to say I'm a past board member for the Board of Education. So education is a big piece of my heart. I'm very thankful to see that Fruitland Primary is part of the report tonight. As at was stated earlier, we do have 24 schools. We have to maintain those buildings, and so we need to keep a school construction project of some type on the books every year. So I'm here to say thank you for that. And I would ask that, you know, if we could work together, I would love to see a better relationship between the Executive's Office, the County Council, the Board of Education, and I would add in the Education Foundation, and our other key partners that we have: Greater Salisbury, the Chamber of Commerce. If we could all work together to make sure that we are doing what we can to fund and maintain our schools for our students. So I would really like to be a part of that and work with you on that. So, and then it was mentioned about forward funding some of the expenses. I understand it's a large number, but I think if you look at it towards the end, it's going to benefit the county and it will save us as taxpayers money. So I think we need to look at the bigger picture, long-term. So I would suggest that. And then separating myself from education, since I live on the west side of the county, I'm happy to see Bearin Creek is on here. And I've been told, but I've not verified my facts, because I'm a fact checker, that there is money that's possibly available to help fund that and cover a huge piece of it, if not all of it. So you may see me again talking about Bearin Creek, but thank you for your time.
Hi, Holly Campbell of Wycomico County. Thanks for having us all here tonight. We appreciate the public hearing. We do feel like it was a little short notice. Maybe you could consider having a public hearing again with a little bit more notice for more people to participate, but we appreciate being here. I wanted to comment about the Connelly Mill Park. I support everybody else's comments tonight. Also, the Fruitland School project and the expansion of the water and sewer programs, very important. Some, some things about Connelly Mill Park. The program Open Space Money, I think, is vital to consider for this. I know everybody wants to know where's the money come from, and why do the taxpayers want to put more money into a park? I think it's really important that people understand program Open Space Money comes from our transactions of property sales. So I'm pretty sure anybody in this room that's ever bought or sold property in the state of Maryland, you have put money into program Open Space. And this morning, the market statistics came out, and I looked from 2019, when Connelly Mill was donated, until now, we've transacted $1.7 billion in real estate in Wycomico County. That means we've put $8.7 million into program Open Space Money. I personally know I've contributed about a million dollars in my transactions in my 18 years of real estate to that money. I see Connelly Mill Park needs to be leveraged. We have a very valuable asset we're sitting on. It is highly ecologically valuable, and I think we're crazy not to leverage that, because parks are economic drivers. Connelly Mill does, whether it's been acknowledged or not, as some of the other people have said, there are targeted ecological areas on that property. I'll just read you a brief thing here about targeted ecological areas in its states. There are lands and watersheds of high ecological value that have been identified as conservation priorities by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for natural resource protection. These areas represent the most ecologically valuable areas in the state. They are the quote-unquote "best of the best." Targeted ecological areas are preferred for conservation funding through stateside program Open Space. This goes on to explain some other things like green infrastructure, significant areas, what they call hubs and corridors. The maps have Connelly Mill plastered with these items, so we feel like, you know, why not leverage the asset that we're sitting on and make it the economic driver that we need? There's another report here, and this is right available on the Delmarva Index when it comes to Maryland: The Economic Impact of Outdoor Recreation. I might go over a little tiny bit, but I think it's important. It says, "Federal, state, and local parks are important assets for enhancing the quality of life for residents, attracting visitors, and generating economic activity. Parks and open spaces offer visitors and residents opportunities to experience the outdoors, engage in physical activities, and immerse themselves in culture and history." Even though Maryland is small, it has 46 state parks. There are also 18 federal parks and a multitude of local and parks and open spaces. I'll state, in its 2019 report, Maryland Outdoor Rec Economic Commission states, "Outdoor recreation is an economic engine in Maryland. Equipment and trip expenditures associated with outdoor rec support a wide range of industry sectors. These expenditures generate ripple effects in the form of additional sales and employment throughout Maryland economies. In 2020, outdoor rec-related expenditures contributed $5.5 billion to the state GDP and sustained 69,377 jobs." I think that we have an asset that we should leverage. Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Dahlien from Wycomico County. I'd like to express my strong support for the inclusion and prioritization of Connelly Mill Park in our county's upcoming capital improvement program. I believe this park holds immense potential to become a vital recreational and environmental asset for our community. This property is over 200 acres and is moments away from downtown Salisbury. Where else do you have such an opportunity in such close proximity to so many citizens? Pemberton is one, and Connelly Mill should be another. Connelly Mill Park would encompass many acres of forest, including old-growth forests, wetlands, and creeks, headwaters to the Wycomico River. Protecting this land from development is crucial for maintaining our region's ecological balance and providing natural spaces for residents to enjoy. Connelly Mill Park could provide much-needed low-impact amenities such as connected walking trails through the Henry S. Parker System and Naylor Mill Forest, ultimate frisbee, walking, hiking, bird watching, hanging out with friends and family, mountain biking, water features for fishing, kayaking, non-motorized boating, running trails, disc golf features, and the list goes on. These additions would promote healthy lifestyles and enhance the quality of life for residents of all ages. Investing in Connelly Mill Park would create increased tourism and attract new residents and keep current residents. This would contribute to the overall economic vitality of our county. I urge you to consider the long-term benefits of investing in Connelly Mill Park by including and prioritizing it in the capital improvement program. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else?
Hello, my name is Christina Holslander. I am here with the Lower Eastern Shore Group of the Sierra Club, if you can't tell. I am also somebody who, my first permanent job was as a naturalist at Pemberton Park 27 years ago. The Sierra Club is the nation's oldest environmental organization, and our local group is representing Wycomico, Worcester, Somerset, Dorchester Counties. And Connelly Mill Park is an exciting area for recreation, as was voiced by so many people prior to me this evening. I recognize that the list of all these potentials of funding sources of, of needs is very challenging for you all to decide what are actually priorities. I do echo that the planning for Connelly Mill Park really should be an important focus for the county, for all the reasons that were previously mentioned. The Sierra Club very much is about exploring, enjoying, and protecting natural areas, and Wycomico County would benefit greatly by prioritizing this land used to be for public access in passive ways that are still allowing for the ecological resources to be highly valued. We are aware that the water quality in our areas has some concerns at the moment with some, some of our more recent concerns related to Purdue. This watershed that is part of the Connelly Mill area, it behooves all of us and our well-being to do what we can to protect it by allowing it to remain in a natural setting. So I ask you to keep that among the priorities. The Board of Education needs is an ongoing constant, and I, I highly encourage, as a citizen, that we always support our public schools and incorporate energy efficiency planning in all of our building structures, whether it's for a freight elevator for this particular building, which seems really low priority when we look at the other things here, but maybe that's a, a low-ticket item that feels like you can take it off the list. But please look at what is important, as well as, as you prioritize things. And then I recognize you have the difficulty, because as more time goes by, then the urgency of what gets prioritized is, makes it more challenging. Because unfortunately, the actual highest place in the county, although natural elevation may include Connelly Mill Park, the highest point of elevation is Trash Mountain and our landfill. So we have a lot of problems to solve, and I appreciate that you are taking public input for this. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lana Foley. I am not a fan of public speaking, so I will keep it short. I just also want to speak just a little bit about, obviously, Connelly Mill and the short notice that I felt that this meeting- notice that I felt that this meeting was given to us. So I'm not super prepared, but I do just want to bring into the conversation about the noise pollution for the potential safari on the quarry and the Jeep Fest, and the fact that this park or this land does have old growth, and the importance of protecting its natural health for the wildlife that does live there is very important, because, especially with old growth, you can't get that back. You can always build another park, obviously, but a place like this is not something you can just recreate. So I just think that's really important to say. Thank you.
My name is Leonard Arvi. I'm a professor of finance at the British School of Business, Salisbury University. Thank you for your public service, county executive, and county council members. The capital improvement plan is sort of a strategic plan for the county. So I echo the sentiments of all the speakers who spoke before me. I want you to think about three things that are important when you attract citizens who want to come and live here. We did a survey, a part of a group, talking to business executives, schools, just public citizens. What attracts them to come and live here? Three things. One is good schools. Next is housing, different price points. Next is safe and a good quality of life in terms of the good environment. So the county, based on its debt service policy, you are allowed to have about 12% of your interest payments going off the general fund, right? Currently, we are spending only about 7.93%, which in my opinion, if you run a business or done a payroll, you're under-investing in terms of the future growth. So we can actually increase our capital investment up to $91 million, if you are borrowing for 25 years at 6.5% and still be under the 12% threshold of, of the debt service policy that the county actually has. So we should proactively think about investing in the future in terms of fast-tracking the renovation and rebuilding our schools, building infrastructure, which means sewers, waters, things like that, thinking like 20 years from now, what can we do for climate resilience in terms of sanitary measures, things like that? And also upholding and attracting businesses so that people will choose to come and live here. We are the capital of the eastern shore, and let's, let's build and grow on it. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Hi, Jared Chabline, resident of downtown Salisbury. I'll be quick and to the point, because many people have made better points than I probably can on this issue. I'm just up here to concur and strongly support funding for and prioritizing Conley Mill Park. Living in downtown Salisbury, obviously, one of the big issues, but we need more housing, you know, we need areas like that. Living downtown, it's also nice to be able to go somewhere where I can enjoy nature. I'm a Pittsfield boy. I'm used to growing up in a rural area. Places like Conley Mill Park are going to be great, too. You know, get away from the hustle and bustle of daily life, enjoy nature, and enjoy what makes the eastern shore so beautiful. So I hope, I know there's many priorities. Education's a huge one as well, that we keep our Conley Mill Park high up on the priority list. Thank you.
Mike Goldberg, Wycomico County. With respect to Conley Mill Park, it seems that it has fallen to a very low priority insofar as it's five years out, the 2030 plan, just to get a, a conceptual master plan. From what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this is in part based on the estimates of remaining suitable fill material remaining at the quarry site. As I recall at the county council meeting, it was estimated that there was sufficient suitable material to go all the way through 2038. Yet I have never seen a geotechnical investigation. I don't know if one was done. I assume one was done at the time that the, the county accepted the park. And at that time, to the best of my recollection, at the time that the land was donation was accepted, they were looking at eight to 10 years of remaining dirt, and now it was reported at a council meeting that will go all the way through 2038, significantly longer than what the original estimate was. I'm unaware that any geotechnical investigations have been done, and if they were done in-house to any extent, I don't think that there's really anybody on the county staff that's qualified. You know, the county engineer is not a registered professional engineer. To the best of my knowledge, there is no geotechnical engineer or geologist. It's a specialty field within the realm of civil engineering, and I think it would be appropriate to come up with an accurate estimate of the remaining quantity of suitable dirt without going outside the existing limits of disturbance. And I would also ask that the county consider looking at the Conley Mill Park as a way to achieve the requirements under its MS4 permit, its National NPDES requirements. I think there's a lot of opportunities there to help the county achieve the requirements of the MS4 permit that should be looked at, and it may help to facilitate earlier development of the park. That's all I got. Thanks.
My name is Mike Swaby. I'm deputy director of Public Works in Wycomico County. The county executive has allowed me the grace to make a brief announcement, seeing as we're nearing the end of our public comment period. Next Tuesday night, here at the Civic Center at 6 o'clock, we are going to be putting on a public waste, a public workshop. So I invite you all to come in and see a presentation of our 10-year plan. We won't have a structured solicitation of your comments, but we will be interested in hearing from you. Our goal is to educate you about the day-to-day operations out there, where we are in terms of capacity, policy, and where we need to be headed. So I hope to see you all out. Thank you. Six o'clock.
I wear three hats, I guess, tonight, many more maybe, but hat number one, I'm an educator, currently in that YI, been in the school system for 28 years. Please keep Fruitland in the plans. Let's fund it. Let's get it done, because behind Fruitland is Y Middle. Behind Y Middle is maybe Glen Avenue, or hopefully YI. Many, many schools down the line, we can't push our schools off because we have too many to do that, and we're going to be increasing shortly with the number of students we have coming into the county, the residents we have coming in. Number two, support Conley Mill, please. Let's get it on, back on the plan, even if it's staged and staggered in how we can fund it. Mobile space money is a great idea. Third is Mason Dixon Park. The state has already given some money towards that. I feel the county doesn't support it. The state will, will think that it's not a priority for us, and they'll pull back any, any future funds. So Delmar Little League uses that facility, over 500 kids a year participate in Delmar Little League, and that's just during, that's just what's during the, the spring of the year. So please keep Mason Dixon on, on the books, too. Thank you.
Good evening. Barry Beecham, county resident. And as far as the, I guess, the elephant in the room here, everybody's talking about, you know, we need funds, and the funds are lack thereof. I'd say the elephant in the room is the tax cap. And I'm just curious, how many people here would be willing to have their taxes, their property taxes raised?
To support any property?
To support any property, because, because, and that's, that's really what we need to really look at. And, you know, for me to say, hey, I'm in favor, you know, of, of a tax increase, really, no one wants to hear that, but I'll be honest with you, from the state level, yesterday I was, I was in a Zoom meeting, and basically, we're about $1.2 billion in a deficit this year. Next year will be $2 billion in a deficit. And basically, what, what is happening, everybody keeps kicking the can down the road, per se. The problem is that we don't have enough money to fund these projects, whether we go to a volunteer fire company. I mean, everybody's looking at the county council, they're looking at the county executive, and the truth of the matter is that everybody's handcuffed. What we don't have is enough money, and you can only slice a pie in, you know, in so many pieces, you know. You know, as far as the, the Conley Mill Park, I couldn't agree more. I like the mountain bike. I'm, you know, I mean, you know, it's, everybody wants another park, you know. The fact is that the dirt that they're using for the landfill is offsetting, you know, it's, it's, it's all about money. I mean, that's, that's basically what we're discussing. And the, the way that I see a compromise with the park would be to fence off a big portion of it, you know, whatever you plan to mine, let's fence that off, let's continue with the park. I mean, I don't think it's going to be, you know, that large of a cost. I think you make a lot of county residents happy in that sense, you know, as far as the, the dirt goes, you know, fence off what you need so that we can extend the, the mining, you know, you know, it's like, you know, it's, it's, it's a money issue. But what I really like to see, everyone in this room that I looked at, raise their hand, and they don't mind property tax cap, you know, being taken away.
Revenue cap.
A revenue cap, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, so, you know, basically, I would say that that's where we're going to have to look, as much as no one wants to talk about it, and I certainly don't want to be the guy to raise my hand and say it, but really, that's, that's where we're at. Our schools need to be funded, landfill needs to be funded, so, you know, it's just, it's just a matter of where else are you going to get the funds? So, thank you.
And not to belabor anything, but I do want to clarify something about Conley Mill. So our mining permit does not allow for dual purpose. So it is not an option for us to fence off a section of it, unfortunately. Now, that's not something that we couldn't look into a little bit further, but right now, our mining permit does not allow that for us to have dual purpose there. It would be a liability with machinery going up and down. So I just wanted to get that out there. I know that there's been some people talking about that dual purpose, and unfortunately, our mining permit doesn't allow that, so. Are there any other public comments? Because if you do have comments about that, I can talk to you about it afterwards. Okay, all right. Well, thank you all for coming out. I appreciate it. We hope you all have a great evening.